Good afternoon. At this time, I would like to ask our IT professionals to start the audio taped recordings of the regular meeting and to admit any members of the public who have chosen to listen to the meeting online. And please confirm that for us.
Recording in progress.
The Zoom call is open and the recording has started.
Oh, Vanda, recording started.
Thank you. My name is Dwayne Vaughn, and I am General Counsel and Assistant Secretary of the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, also known as Atlanta Housing. Before the regular meeting is called to order, please consider the following announcements. We welcome the members of the public who have joined us in person in the room at the Atlanta Housing headquarters for this regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Atlanta Housing. We also welcome the members of the public who have joined this meeting via audio conference. There is an option to view the meeting livestreamed. Members of the public can find the link in the notices section on the Atlanta Housing website. The live streaming link is also contained on the Atlanta Housing board docs. Please be advised that any members of the public who wish to address the board during the time of the public comment period must sign up on the public speaker signup sheet in the front door of this room. A link to the meeting agenda, board resolutions, and presentation materials are available for review by the public by accessing the link on Atlanta Housing website at www atlantahousing.org/notices. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Larry Stewart, and I serve as the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. I am calling this regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia, to order. Today is Wednesday, March 22, and the time is 2:07 PM. Will General Counsel take the role to determine a quorum for the meeting? Here.
Commissioner Kirsch.
Here.
Commissioner Elliott.
Here.
Commissioner Faruqi. Commissioner Faruqi. Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Hooker. Commissioner Hooker. Commissioner Trailer.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there is a quorum present.
All right. The agenda has been presented to the Board for review and comment. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Hearing none. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda? May I have a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Elliott and seconded by Commissioner Trailer. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. All right.
The minutes of the regular Board of Commissioners meeting held on February 22, 2023 are before the Board for review and comment. Are there any proposed corrections to the minutes of this meeting?
All right. Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on February 22, 2023? May I have a second?
Second.
All right. So moved by Commissioner Elliott and seconded by Commissioner Curse. Is there any discussion related to the motion to approve the minutes of this meeting? All right. Hearing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion is carried. All right. This is the time where we have public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the board signed up on the public speaker signup sheet as they entered the meeting. Each speaker who has signed up will be called to the podium and will have three minutes to address the board. Have any members of the public signed up to speak?
We will have Ms. Witherspoon, Ms. Monica Witherspoon, be our first speaker. And Ms. Witherspoon, I'll let you know if necessary when you have 30 seconds left. Thank you very much.
My name is Monica Witherspoon, and I relocated from Kenton, North Carolina in 2016 after serving 14 years, 364 days in the United States Army Reserve. I am a two-time war veteran. My last deployment was Afghanistan. I did 11 months, boots on ground. I stand before you today asking for total transparency in the unfair treatment of veterans and the ongoing displacement of working-class families. I am a total, permanent, and disabled minority female black veteran. Since moving in my apartment complex, I have experienced retaliation due to me filing code enforcement to the point that I was served with a stalking protective order that was later dismissed. I am also a community, I'm also involved in the community. I've been a team mom to my son's football team. I'm a member of the community court watch. And today, I'm asking that someone from housing allow me to get in touch with the right representative to find me stable housing. I currently have 90 days to find a place for me and my son. And I have reached out to several agencies, local and federal, and have not received any assistance. So today, I'm asking that everyone hear my voice, and please find me safe housing and affordable housing. I have been subject to drive-by shootings. I have been subject to dirty water. I have been subject to mold. I have been subject to bud, bugs. And I'm asking that the Atlanta Housing have total transparency moving forward in allowing builders to come into our community and treat us the way that they treat us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next?
Our next speaker will be Ms. Margie Michael.
Good afternoon. I'm also a former veteran, retired veteran, also a school bus driver, retired. This bus driver, her name is Janice Burke. She not be able to come here today because she had to work, and she had to take your kids back home from school. It's a shame that we are going through this. It's a shame that the people are afraid to come out. It's the same story over and over. She having the same complaints. And let me read her letter. It hurts. I want y'all to feel her pain. No one in America should be feeling like this, that they so afraid to come down here to tell you what's happening, their complaints, and when they're tenants. And when they're tenants and they go complain, guess what? They harassed them. To whom it may concern, have been encouraged, harassed. Treatment on the Brown Mills property. I have complained for three years about maintenance issue. Electric bad, electric toilets, mildew, kitchen is broken down. I fell. I'm going through all of this, and also I fell in my apartment. How many times I told half of them to come inspect my house, no one added a deaf ear. What is gonna take? People that I give my rent to, they say that they didn't get it, but I got my receipts. What is gonna take? People coming in my apartment without me knowing about it. And I have a daughter that is afraid. What are you gonna do? She been to many agency. She calling for help. Just don't wait, there's something gonna happen. This is America. We are in a communist country that we cannot come and report something, and we do, we get harassed. Housing Authority, you gotta do a better job. Like I told you before, if you don't have enough staff, hire the people. Because people out here crying. Because you don't go in there inspect them houses. You don't. Because if you go down today, you'll see what she's going through, pain. She handicapped. She fell. She said, put me down on the first floor. She been there three years. So I want this woman, this bus driver, she's a person, she's a human being, that you be able to take her out of that complex. I'm not stopping. And rent, what you do, income, her rent go up. She in full market when it's supposed to be earned income. People getting displaced. And I know it's happened everywhere, but y'all supposed to be watching, watching, making sure that this don't happen to nobody. Because if that was a dog that was in housing or whatever, you'll pick up that phone. You'll pick up that phone, okay, let me go check on this dog. Because the dog don't have no water. The room is too messed up. So that's some ass. Her name is Janice Burke. Please find a place for her. Because she is getting harassed. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your pro comment. Who do we have next?
Next, we have Mr. Rodney Mullins.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Rodney Mullins. I'm the former National Consumer Advocate, served with the Obama Administration, subject to work, focused on working FDA. I'm calling you today, on to you. This is another request for the information I requested from Chairman Stewart for total transparency. We have a dilemma, Chairman Stewart. We know it might be funny, it might be cute to have public comment, but many of the people that I talk to are afraid to come to you, Chairman, because they're afraid they'll lose their vouchers. They're afraid of the retaliation that you heard from Ms. Witherspoon. So we need your help. We need you to be the Housing Authority that you were commissioned to be. So you've transferred those responsibilities to partners. Those partners have not received your ethics. So we were made promises by community leaders. People told us that we would have housing. We were told they could return to that housing when they were pushed out. I'm sure you know what happened to Bankhead, Court, Bankhead, all the houses on Donleye Holloway and across Georgia. They were told they could return. So we want metrics to know how many people were able to return. We want to know about the land being sold, Chairman. Because there is land even now with Carver Homes, Chairman, and property around Morris Brown that's owned by the Atlanta Housing Authority. The question is, sir, the moral question is, why would all of that property not be sold for low-income people? You're too smart, Commissioners, to not know what's going on. Private developers are treated with more respect than these citizens. So let me tell you what's going on. When they receive a voucher in the complex, they're placed at the back of the complex. People that receive housing chores vouchers are placed at the back. They don't receive priority with maintenance. Some of the speakers today might be a little nervous, but they didn't express to you. Some of them dealt with raw sewage. They came out of the bathtub. They could not wash their clothes, sir. This unhealthy, they reported to code enforcement. And these are your partners. So the fact that we have deferred all of our properties to these private developers is not working. So we're requesting metrics on those. What has resulted from this? Because as you know, we have 24,000 people on the waiting lists. Now, that doesn't count the other ones that were removed and told you could come back, but the door was closed. So we want metrics on the maintenance of all facilities. We have questions about inspections. Why hasn't the Housing Authority been inspected? Why was Ms. Witherspoon in a home with raw sewage? And we have many other citizens, but they're afraid. I never thought I would have a challenge to talk to people that look like me about justice against people that look like the people that live in these residents. They should be priorities, sir. That's what we're begging. We're begging for transparency. We want a response to the inquiries that we've made. We know the Housing Authority is under reprimand by federal authorities. In 2022, you were cited. We want an update on those citations from the housing, the urban development. We want to know what's going on with that. We want to know when you're gonna go into emergency mode. This is your Katrina. Please wake up. It's not funny with people living out of cars, because evictions lead to teenage convictions. When kids get locked out of home, sir, you're smart. They turn and make bad choices. I'm requesting that the Housing Authority address these issues, that you move all of your resources toward low-income housing and not subsidies for developers from Gwinnett and Cobb in Ohio and Texas. Okay? We request accountability, sir. We know you can do it, and I'm begging you to do it, because lives are at stake, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Before the next person reads, so just to Mr. Mullins, we do have a response. We'll make sure that we get that response to you today. And obviously, there may have been more requests that were not covered, that you said today, you didn't say last month, but we'll make sure that you get that, and then we'll continue the conversation on that. Who's next?
Okay. Ms. Shanda Galbson. Ms. Shanda Galbson? Ms. Jody Williams?
Hi, I'm Jody Williams, with maturing young women and men of Fulton and DeKalb. And I'm also a representative of number one next of kin. I thank you for your service to the people of Atlanta. Today, the people of Atlanta are talking, taking, I'm sorry, action to create a solution to the housing pandemic. Atlanta is in a gentrification tsunami and housing pandemic that requires emergency massive resources and a robust commitment to the people that have been left behind and lost in our affordable housing strategies. The areas that were once housing projects have been gentrified. We need the Housing Authority to place a covenant on the land that includes the principles of subsidized housing, accessibility, and equality. The 14,000 people that the Atlanta Housing Authorities pushed through the doors of no return have not been able to return without housing for teachers, street sweepers, and people that look like Martin Luther King. Atlanta will forever be changed. Five knees on the neck of working-class Atlanta families. Rent control was a fundamental principle of Atlanta Housing Authority policy. We need the Housing Authority to be a public advocacy and stand firm with the people on critical issues that lead to evictions, convictions, and housing restrictions. The people need AHA speak in a voice that sustain the people, but we cannot hear you. You are defined and designated as the City of Atlanta leaders in housing for low-income families. Today, a large majority of the developers that are partners with the Housing Authority are the same developers that have a knee on the necks of low-income people in Atlanta. These same developers that the Housing Authority has conveyed and trusted
30 seconds remaining.
with our precious public land to house our families are leading the effort to push our low-income restaurant workers, teachers, and street sweepers through the door of no return. The people of Atlanta are pursuing five legal and public actions to hold those developers accountable. Will you stand with the people? Atlanta housing policies has to include honest, fair principles that elevate the rights of low-income people. First, equitable housing access and low-term loyalty to low-income families that is contractually codefied and binding. Currently, many of the developers that are partners with Atlanta Housing are using deception, tricks, and legal loopholes to gentrify Atlanta. Question.
Time.
Are people first, or are developers first?
So I know we had one more person that we had on.
Yes. Did Ms. Shanda Galston? Ms. Shanda Galston? Okay. If there are no other members of the public waiting to speak, Chair.
Okay. All right. Things, and then we'll continue with the meeting. So first, any of the allegations of issues that are impacting people, we will make sure that we get direct information so that we can address anything and investigate anything that's there. I think, I appreciate the staff. I know that many of the things that were communicated last month, we have responded to, and we will send that information over to Mr. Mullins. I know that he had sent over some information for us. So that is something that we take seriously. We will also make sure that as we go forward, and I'll just say this, we appreciate public comment. I think I said this at the very beginning of me being elected as Chair. I don't take that lightly. I don't want anyone from the public to feel like they cannot come before us and communicate the things that they see, hear, or go, or have experienced themselves. So that's an important point for us, and we will make it a commitment to make sure that for those who have come out, I don't want anybody to feel like we didn't hear what you said, but we will make sure that someone reaches out to make sure that we have gotten all of your information and can communicate back to you in response to the things that have been communicated. With that said, anything else from any other Commissioners before we move forward?
I just wanted to ask that if Ms. Williams, I saw that you wrote your notes. If you want to share those with us, we can, or email those to us or copy that. We'll make sure to read those, or we'll just have those, since you didn't have, we only have a certain amount of time for public comment, so that's the reason why you didn't finish.
Okay. I wanted to ask a question, since that other person is not here and I attend.
No, ma'am, but I wanted to also know, just wanted to say that we heard Ms. Witherspoon, we heard Ms. Michael, we also heard, I'm sorry, and Ms. Burke, who's not here, that's driving.
All right. Any other comments before I move us forward?
There were no comments submitted by email or telephone, so you can proceed, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. This ends the public comment portion of the meeting. At the Board of Commissioners' September 22, 2021 meeting, the Board approved a consent agenda protocol. There are five resolutions appearing below that receive unanimous votes of approval at the Board of Commissioners' Real Estate Committee, Operations Committee, or Audit Finance Committee meetings held on March 15, 2023. A single motion and the affirmative majority vote of the Board of Commissioners will approve the collective group of resolutions on the consent agenda. If discussion on any resolution is desired by a Commissioner, the Commissioner must make that desire known to the Board Chair immediately following the reading of the consent agenda items, and the resolution will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately or in the discretion of the Board Chair. A discussion may occur prior to the vote on the consent agenda resolutions. Moreover, if a Commissioner simply wants his or her vote to be specifically recorded on any particular item, separate votes may be taken on the resolution. Will the General Counsel identify the five resolutions on the consent agenda for the record?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 23-01, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to enter into a Home Flex Committee with one applicant to the choice neighborhood's notice of funding availability for 69 units at The Simpson. Resolution number 23-10, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to provide a predevelopment loan to RDP EQ Affordable Developer LLC in support of Sylvan Hills Phase Two, and to seek approval from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Resolution number 23-11, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization of the final business terms and to complete the financial closing for the redevelopment of Heritage Village at Westlake. Resolution number 23-12, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to submit its fiscal year 2024 Moving to Work Annual Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Resolution number 23-13, the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia requests the Board to acknowledge and accept, one, the annual comprehensive financial report and independent auditor's report for the fiscal years ending June 30, 2022, and June 30, 2021, and, two, the reports of the independent certified public accountants in accordance with the government auditing standards and uniform guidance for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022.
All right. May I have a motion to consider, adopt, and approve the consent agenda containing resolutions number 2301, resolutions 2310, resolution number 2311, resolution 2312, and resolution 2313?
So moved.
May I have a second? All right. So moved by Commissioner Trailer and seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Is there any discussion related to this consent agenda? All right. Hearing no further discussion, well, actually, I think this is the place where we can actually just make some key points, and then we'll call for the vote. So just for the purpose of everyone's kind of on-the-record component of what's included here. So first, wanted to say thanks for providing the information relative. I think for many years, we've had clean audits. We have a clean audit again, and so I want to make sure that we acknowledge and thank staff particularly for keeping track of our financials and making sure that we are always in accordance to what we need to do relative to that. Secondly, our fiscal plan that we're gonna be submitting for MTW. Again, I think one of the things that's unique about us is that we are an MTW organization, and I think it's great that we are continuing that path and making sure that we do the work that we do, and we are prepared to send that information to HUD. And then lastly, that the work that we have, and I think sometimes we reserve this for the end, but while we have an active audience, that these resolutions represent what would be 216, I think, created units. And so it's important, I want to elevate that this is what the work that's in the resolutions within this consent agenda, what they represent. So thank you for all the hard work, and hopefully, we will approve these resolutions. Any other? All right. With that said, hearing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The motion carries.
Commissioners, before you, is a copy of resolution number 23-09, where the Housing Authority of the City of Atlanta, Georgia seeks authorization to take all actions to, one, enter into a contract, two, expend funds related to infrastructure installation, and, three, to secure United States Department of Housing and Urban Development approval for the disposition of approximately 5.07 acres of land for the development of Phases 1A and 1B in furtherance of the redevelopment of the former Inglewood Manor site.
May I have a motion to consider resolution 239?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Sure.
All right. So moved by Commissioner Curse and seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Trish, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. So approval of this resolution will allow us to move forward with the advancement of construction of what ultimately will be 909 residential units, of which 690 will be affordable. The resolution is fundamentally about infrastructure, and as you know, infrastructure is fundamental to the actual construction of these units. And so, especially when you deal on a large-scale project where all of the project where all of the infrastructure needs to be done in advance. So we're requesting authorization to enter into a contract in an amount up to $30 million that will be funded by program, AH program income and non-federal funds for the obligation of the contract, and this will allow us to advance all of the pre-development work, the entitlement, and start infrastructure construction in May in advance of the first closing phase in September. We're also requesting approval to take the actions necessary to get HUD approval so that we can dispose of the land to a long-term ground lease, maintaining perpetual affordability on the site, and it's about 507, sorry, 5.07 acres on the site. As we walk through this, I'll be explaining the funding a little bit. It's a matter of timing, how our funds go in from the obligated amount to the funds that will be coming back in, both from the project costs from the developers, from HUD, from the moving-to-work dollars that will replenish some of the other dollars that we will be using. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Yeah, so just real quickly, this is, again, the master plan for Inglewood. The two phases that will be closing that we're actually talking about are B and C at the top. Those are two rental phases that will comprise 360 units. As I said earlier, when this is built out, there will be 909 total units, 81 of them will be for sale, and the balance will be rental across five different phases. Next slide, please. Angela. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we, if you could go back one, excuse me, the same slide picture. So that just shows you, again, the disposition. These are Phases 1A and 1B, and just to make sure you're clear, the multifamily is the 2.7 acres, and the senior deal is 2.38 acres. Again, the total of the two will be 360 altogether. Next slide, please. So let's dig into the infrastructure development plan for a minute. So how have we approached this? Again, this is a large-scale infrastructure plan for 30 acres. It is a connected, innovative, green infrastructure plan that takes a long-term look at resiliency and sustainability, as well as managing the stormwater needs for the site. We worked with the Housing Authority because we had two different developers, we're obligated to take on the development of the plan for infrastructure, and we engaged KAI Enterprises. They are about 90%, 98% complete, just going through the entitlement phases, and through them, we worked with Palacio Collaborative to do cost analysis throughout the entire process, to do value engineering, and trying to keep the cost as low as possible. As you know, the rule of thumb is about $1 million an acre for infrastructure development. Then we went through a procurement process to get a construction manager to manage the process. That's Engineering Design Technologies. They are an integrated engineering and design firm. They will serve as a construction manager at risk, and what's important about that is that when we sign the contract with them, once they have secured all the subcontractor bids, they will be obligated to perform according to the timetable and the costs that have been developed by the subcontractors. They'll be working with Choate Construction, which is a well-recognized southeastern firm. They also work nationally to implement that work. Next slide, please. Just a brief, just so you can see the schedule, we are hoping to start construction in May 2023. We are still in the entitlement process and getting our final land disturbance permit approved. Should that go through, we hope to break ground in May. It's about an 18-month process, concluding with final closeout in November 2024. You can see in this schedule that we have integrated also the closings for the first two phases, which will occur during the infrastructure period, and that is the Benoit Group's Phases 1A and 1B I spoke about earlier, and the other phases are actually outside of the infrastructure period and will occur starting in 2025. Next slide, please. So this is, this is the tricky part with the flow of funds. So again, we're requesting the obligate, we're requesting funding so that we can obligate the contract, basic, basic rule, and we want to be able to go up to 30 million. We have a cost estimate of 28, 851, 989, but that is a cost estimate. You don't know what your final costs are until the subs come in and the GC actually buys out those contracts, and the subs are obligated to pay for that. Next slide, please. And so AH is able, using HUD and other dollars, to pay for its pro-rata share of affordable units. There are, the affordable units ratio is 81%, and so our obligation to pay is $23,484,173. And again, we'll start out with program income and non-federal funds. The developers will pay $5,367,816, and they will pay those though at closing. So that's the timing problem that we're talking about. We are obligating on the front end, we're getting paid through the, paid for a portion of it. About 50% will be the payback between the developers, and then MTW funds at HUD will allow us to draw down as part of a project closing. And so that is the basic timing issue. So, you know, just sort of kind of summing it up, we need to be able to obligate all the funds to be able to start the work. HUD will only allow us to obligate certain funds in advance, which is why we're using the program income and the non-federal funds for the obligation. We will get paid back about 50% between, as a result of the closings. So in summary, again, we're requesting authorization to enter into the construction management-at-risk contract with Engineering Design Technologies in an amount not to exceed $30 million, of which $24,300 is program income and 5.7 is non-federal funds. This will, again, allow us to start construction on the first phase of housing development in September 2023. We're also requesting your approval to, and to submit our application to HUD so that we can dispose of the 5.07 acres associated with those first two phases as a long-term ground lease. Any questions?
Thank you for re-presenting. This is not an insignificant investment, nor is it an insignificant challenge to activate all of the land, as you referenced, $1 million an acre, to put this resource to work, right? And so just want to thank you for walking back through this, so we all understand how this works, how that can apply to other assets that are sitting dormant, that can be working for residents and families. I just want to underscore two things that you said to make sure I understand correctly. One is that 50% of this will be paid back at closing.
About 50%.
Roughly. Yeah, we won't hold you to it. And that if other sources were identified to help take AH out of the deal, those could be paid back as well, and therefore, these would be resources that could be freed up for future investments.
Thank you, Commissioner. I actually should have mentioned that. That should be at the top of my list, because the team here is actively looking for other resources. We actually have an application with the state for, you know, a couple of million, you know, we'll just keep cobbling it together. We're talking to the Belt Line about potentially funding part of, part of a trail that runs through the site. So yes, we are actively trying to take our precious resources and be able to put them directly to housing.
Thank you. We know we're all looking at the goals and the strategic plan and aware that there's a gap to get those housing units preserved and produced for residents, so that's great news. The other thing I just want to clarify, the disposition of the five acres is through a long-term land lease.
Yes. And I think it's about 75 years is typically what we do to them, and at the end of the ground lease, everything reverts back to us, both the buildings and the land.
So at the end of, so we're, the disposition is never really losing ownership or control because at the end of that time period, we own the underlying land of the asset.
Yes. One of our fundamental principles is here, is that we are kind of a land trust, not called that, but kind of, in that we preserve our land to the greatest extent possible.
Thank you. I think that term disposition can be confusing, right? Because it's the technical term, but we are not disposing of it as an agency. We are entering into a long-term ground lease.
Yes.
Because our mission is the long-term affordability. So thank you for clarifying and for re-presenting for the benefit of not just our board, but the larger audiences, we're thinking about how we're shepherding resources.
Thank you.
Chairman Stewart, will the people who serve the involved in this communication process have any voice? Because there was no details in there about, but I just want to know if we have a voice in respect. Because we haven't seen the contract, and this is where the contractors play tricks with the order. We'd like to see the definition of the order. Would you please give that to us?
So, so one, let me make sure that, so I'm going to let Tanee answer this question that she want.
You have to see the contract.
Hold on, sir. I got you. So let me just make sure. So one, this is the part of the, you had public comment, and we let you say everything. So I'm just saying, yelling out from the, from the, from the audience, I just, I want to make sure that we keep, because we were going to answer a lot of questions that you've answered. I'm happy to continue to do that, but I want you to do it out of order, all right? So I, so Tanee, I think, wants to ask a question. She's going to ask the question on your behalf, but I want you to just help, help me out there, all right? All right, go ahead, Tanee. Hold on, Commissioner Trailer.
That's right, in my respect. No, so Trish, you mentioned the 360 units. You said that it was going to be over 900 units ultimately a part of the project. For this phase of the project, do you have a breakdown of the units and how they all shape out in terms of affordability?
Certainly. Angela, if you wouldn't mind going back to slide, it should be three. It has disposition phases 1A and B at the top. So there you can see the background, the breakdown. So the first, the Phase 1A is the multifamily rental, and that one will have 100 AH subsidized units, meaning that we will have our home flex on those units. We will have 60 tax credit only, and those are available to families at 60% of HUD area median income, and they'll be 40 market rate. So the percentage there is about 80% affordable to families with incomes less, with incomes up to 80% of area median income. On the senior project, did I say, did I miss say something?
Can we just say that, but the range, you know, the 80% is the, is the top, is the top. But it could go as...
Yes, and that's why I corrected myself to say up to 80%, so it can go from zero to 80, depending on the funding source.
The average is typically between, what?
I think on our subsidized units, the average is 30% and below. So, and do, so on the senior phase, which is a total of 160 units, we'll have 128 of those same subsidized units with our home flex. There are no tax credit only, and they're 32 market rate. And so that is a total of, you know, 128 affordable units on the site. Again, for families, up to 80% of area median income with our subsidized units supporting the families at around 30%.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions by the Commissioners? All right. So hearing no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections, any abstentions? All right, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So I understand that there are not any new business matters at this time, and so we will now go into our report from our President, CEO.
I have a 40-minute report. Don't really take my time. How about the strategic plan books? Aren't they great? Aren't they great? And I'm, I'm just so impressed. I'm not trying to brag or anything like this, but I am. When I was in Toronto, we did something similar to this, but not as professional as this one is. My staff put in a lot of time and effort, and I want to thank them for putting this great book. We will, we'll give you as many books as you want, but I'm taking this show on the road when it comes to this strategic plan, this book, because it's going all over the city. Everyone's going to know it, everyone's going to see about it. Let me respond to a couple of, a couple of things, just to make sure that we're all, that the public is all on the same pages as we are. First thing, I want to say that I take it to heart about the professionalism of my staff, especially as it comes to contracting. There are about like five layers that we go through contracting to prove this, prove this, and prove this, and it's exhausting, especially when the staff goes through it, then procurement has to go through it, then the legal has to go through it, then I got to go through it, and then we got presented to the board. And then after it's presented to the board, we still have one more compliance issue, and that's HUD. And so we have so many layers to make sure that we protect the interests of not only the citizens of Atlanta, but the people who we serve. And I stand behind that tooth and nail. We got the best procurement, the best professional staff that looks at these contracts, and just, it's just exhausting as the process that they go through. So I just want to make sure that, our Commissioners, that there's nothing that we're trying to sneak by you, we just cannot do that. That's not what we do, we're very professional. We want to make sure that we have the best product for you so they can accept something. And if it's not right, I know how you'll remand it back to us, and we'll just make it better the next time. So I just want to make sure I emphasize that. What I also want to say about the public comments, I share the same sentiments as the Board Chair and the Vice Chair and the Board of Commissioners. You know, used way back in the day, especially in bigger cities like San Francisco, Chicago, and all of DC, they used to pound and pound and pound with public comments, and the staff used to take offense with it because, why do they keep complaining? I said, the only reason why they're complaining is because no one's listening to them, and so they have to bring it to their attention so that everyone would respond. But I also want to make sure that there's always two sides of the story. You know, you got to say the whole story because we got to prove the other side of the story to make sure that story is correct. And we're not trying to say, I got you or anything like that, but there are always two sides of the story. We want to make sure that we're always going to be impartial and very honest when we respond to any of the inquiries. So I keep welcoming public comments. What I take offense to is that when there's retaliation. Now, I've not seen retaliation, I've not heard of retaliation, and if I do, there's a process that I take. One thing that I have not shared with the Board of Commissioners, which I'm getting very public, and I publicize it real soon, I have a red phone on my desk, and the red phone is a phone number that anyone can call and give them, give me any information that they think that we need to know. I don't want the public to say they only, they can only come to you, they can come to me, they can come to anyone on my staff, but I have a red phone that's going to be on my desk, it's there, I can't even remember the phone number, but I'm going to put it on the website, and it's a phone that I pick up only. No one else picks up, just like no one picks up my emails, answer all my emails, answer all my calls on the phone. And that way that we can get the information before we have to bring it to the Board of Commissioners and resolve the issue, and not make it, not make it something that we're not addressing. We want to address all the issues. We like to address them before we go to the Board of Commissioners, but if that's, if you don't, I understand that, but we're going to respond to it. The Board Chair, as well as the Vice Chair and the rest of the Commissioners, we know we respond to these issues, and we give you the best professional response that we can get. That's what we do. And if someone even questions transparency, they're going to have to just go toe-toe with me, because we put everything out there in honest form so that we make sure that it doesn't come back and say, well, Jean, you said this, and, no, I said this, here's, here's what we said it, and we want to make sure that everyone understands what we're trying to do. So I just want to say that. I also want to say two things. I'm proud to announce that Ken Sodakis is a permanent CFO, and also DeeDee Beede is our Chief Real Estate Officer. I want to congratulate those two. And then I want to, I want to make a presentation to a person who has led this agency for a temporary period of time, who has been a very big proponent of public and assisted housing. She's been a joy to work with, very pleasant, very uplifting, and very inquisitive when it comes to information about what we do here at Atlanta Housing. So Commissioner Tanee Trailer, will you stand up, please, and come to the podium, please? So Commissioner Tanee Taylor, will you stand up, please, and come to the podium, please? We never like to say goodbye at all. Absolutely no. And it is not like we're saying that Commissioner Taylor's gone away, she's never coming back. She's still going to be integral in this, in this positive endeavor, especially when it comes to our five-year strategic plan, but we want to say, we want to say thank you from the bottom of our heart, from my staff, also as representing with the Board of Commissioners, your valued input of the success of this agency, and we want to just say thank you. And here's a bouquet of beautiful flowers.
Well, first, I love flowers. I love flowers.
So would you like to say something, Commissioner?
Oh, sure. First, I love flowers, and I love beautiful, colorful flowers, so thank you. First of all, just, first, thank you to Mayor Bottoms, who appointed me to the Board of Commissioners in 2021, and thank you to the Mayor Dickens for his ongoing support of me on this board. I got off the plane on Saturday, and I was talking fine, and then I got to Atlanta, and now my voice is gone, it's that pollen. But anyway, I just want to say, you know, I've learned so much from Jean and Terry and Dwayne and Angela and Lisa, the full, the full staff here at Atlanta Housing. Thank you for, I hope, educating me, and I hope that has translated to the nonprofit and philanthropic sector here in Atlanta, but also the residents. I'm a true advocate for the City of Atlanta, and I sent this to my email to Terry and Jean and our Board Chair, also to all the residents here, specifically those that are historically disadvantaged and been marginalized. I'm a true advocate. Hopefully, my career stands up to that, but it's been a true pleasure to participate on this board. I've learned so, so much. Thank you, Commissioner, all of you all, and the ones that are not here. Thank you all, it's been a pleasure, humbled, thank you.
Thank you. Amazing staff, amazing staff.
Board Chair, that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you for that, Jean. All right, well, so this is that time when we ask, are there any comments by any of the Commissioners?
I just want to thank Commissioner Taylor for her leadership, serving as Chair when so many of us were coming on. That was a really important transition, and for your keen strategic advice as we developed the strategic plan. Your service and leadership will be missed, and we're very grateful.
All right, cool, so I'll make a few comments. Obviously, everyone gave the official stuff, so I'll just say the stuff from the heart, which is, you know, Tanee, you came, you were here at a time where a lot of us were new. You were my first Chair, and so I appreciate all of the diligence and those nighttime conversations, talking about what we were trying to do and endeavor, a lot of what we put together as it relates to the strategic plan, how we're moving forward as a result of your time and your experience, and so I thank you for all of the work that you've done for Atlanta Housing, for me, and certainly for the residents of Atlanta, and so we wish you the best on your future pursuits. Also, I'll just reiterate what I said when we were talking about, on the consent agenda comments, but just the impact of today's boards, actions. A total of 216 affordable units will be created for individuals and families as a result of what we've done today, and so that's at The Simpson, at Sylvan Hills, at Heritage Village. So I want to just make sure that we keep talking about the impact of each individual meeting and how it relates to our strategic plan, where we want to create 5,000 units in that five-year span. The Moving to Work Plan, really, I think I fumbled that a little bit in terms of how I said it, but it really demonstrates and supports the work that we have in the strategic plan. So I just want to make sure that there's alignment there, and anywhere where we find that there isn't, that people highlight it, bring it up, so that we are, ensure that we are staying focused and on the path that we laid forth. I think this Moving to Work Plan does that. And then, of course, again, thank you to the staff for the work that they've done to make sure that we are at the highest level of integrity as it relates to our financials, and that is represented by the audit and what we got back when we, from our auditors. So that's today's session, and so last thing, I'll just reiterate, and I think, you know, thank you, Eugene, for your comments as it relates to how we manage the work. So Mr. Mullins, you're not being ignored, right? I think we heard you. I think, you know, I said from the start, as Board Chair, we wanted to hear from the public, so there is no dismissal of that. Everything that we heard from each individual, right, we will make sure that we have reviewed and investigated and respond to what things we know are legitimate, right? Everything that's said, right, we will, we will spend the time with it, and so I just want to make sure that you guys are heard. We will make sure that the feedback from last month will get responded to by you, will take the things that came up this month, and we'll make sure that what's real is addressed, right? What isn't, we respond to and make sure that you know, hey, we addressed it. Maybe we, if there's a misunderstanding of the work and the things that are happening, we want to be apprised of that, and as a board, we will respond and make sure that we address what things need to be addressed from that end. So I don't want there to be any doubt, right, that that's where we are. We are a representative body to represent the citizens of Atlanta and making sure they're treated fairly, and we're going to do the best we can. I mean, a lot of this work that's in the strategic plan is about creating more, more housing, preserving more housing, ensuring that it is the highest quality that we can make it, and making sure that it is representative of those who need it the most. So I don't think that we've ever taken our eye off the ball on that, we won't, and so I want to make sure that you continue to communicate with, with us on how we can best do that, but I also want to make sure, when you hold us accountable, hold everybody else as accountable, right? We are above one body. I've heard a lot of things, and that's not representative of people that are in this room, that have accused us of things that do not belong to us. So I want to make sure you go to the bodies that they belong to, particularly when we highlight them, and be just as vigilant and communicative, and hold them accountable to the same things that you hold us accountable to. We're willing to stand up to that charge, I want to make sure everyone else is doing the same. That said, I think, so I think you gave the special presentation, even though you put it on here at the end. Okay, cool, so that was a special presentation, I want to make sure. If there are no further, I guess, business of this board, I have a motion to adjourn this meeting. All right, may I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then this meeting is adjourned at 2:00, I don't even know what time it is, 3:02. All right, thank you.